Item number eight.
Item number eight is proclamation recognizing National Adoption Month. Carrie Bremer, County Commissioner, Board of County Commissioners.
Commissioner Bremer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move approval of the following proclamation recognizing National Adoption Month. Whereas, National Adoption Month was established by President Gerald Ford in 1990 as a collective national effort to raise awareness of the many children in foster care waiting to find permanent loving families. And whereas, El Paso County completed 207 adoptions for children in foster care or kinship care in 2019 through September 2020. And of those, 81 were kin or kin-like adoptions. Whereas, there is currently an active search for adoptive families for 24 El Paso County children. And whereas, the El Paso County Department of Human Services has a primary mission to strengthen families, assure the safety of children, and improve overall quality of life in our community. And whereas, the El Paso County Department of Human Services with its many private, community-based, and nonprofit partners plays a vital role in maintaining and increasing citizen involvement in adoption so that waiting children can find stable and permanent homes. And whereas, it is with great thanks that we recognize all El Paso County adoptive parents and the many dedicated adoption professionals who work to connect foster children with loving families. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado hereby recognizes November as Adoption Month in El Paso County and proclaims its sincere gratitude to our community's adoptive families who have opened their hearts and homes to provide love and stability for the youngest members of our society, helping them grow into successful adults and building the future of El Paso County. Done the 17th day of November 2020 at Colorado Springs, Colorado. The Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Colorado, Mark Waller, Chair; Loheinoz Gonzalez, Jr., Vice Chair; Stan Vanderwerf, Holly Williams; and Kami Bremer, Members; and attested to by Chuck Brewerman, County Clerk and Recorder.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. So with that, I want to open it up. Looks like Julie Crowe has something to say. Come on down. And if you'd like to speak on this proclamation, please make your way forward.
Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Crowe, Executive Director of El Paso County Department of Human Services. I'd like to start by thanking the adoptive families and others for what you have done to positively impact the life of a child. You have given one of the greatest gifts to your children, and you are truly heroes in our community. I also want to thank you Commissioners and also our County Administrator and Deputy County Administrator, Amy Folsom, for all of your support of the Department of Human Services. Your support makes possible the great work by caseworkers to help families. We can start advancing the slides, please. Saturday, this last Saturday, was a sunny, cold, and blustery day, but the Department of Human Services staff who work with families who adopt El Paso County children were not deterred by the weather. Many of them are here in the room. And we also had Commissioner Gonzalez and Commissioner Bremer, as well as Deputy County Administrator Kenny Hodges join us. We had an event to recognize our adoptive families on Saturday. And you'll see before you, we don't have words, we just have pictures. Sometimes I think a picture speaks a thousand words. So staff wrote encouraging and cheerful signs to greet families as they drove through the loop at the Citizen Service Center to pick up bags of small toys and treats. There were cookies and discount passes for the zoo. So it was a special day for us. Nearly 20 families stopped by for the drive-through appreciation event. It was a small gesture and very different from how we have normally celebrated these families in past years. In fact, in past years, I've attended some of the events, and they've been big pizza parties with bouncy castles and face painting. And we just couldn't do that this year with COVID-19. But we still wanted to do something to recognize the adoptive families that are so important to us and most importantly, so crucial for our children. And I always think about Adoption Month around the holidays because being in foster care is difficult, but it's not permanent. And children need permanent homes. And if you think about yourself, well past being 18, you've relied on your own family, and your children will rely on you. They need a place to go for the holidays. They need someone to cry, a shoulder to cry on when something doesn't go well. They need someone to support them through college or career moves that they have. They need a home to go to for Thanksgiving and Christmas. And so adoption is so important for everyone. It's not like you turn 18 and that's the end. You need your family. And maybe someday you'll have a child, and you want that child to have grandparents. So what could be more important than adopting a child? So Saturday was a very fun opportunity to show support for our adoptive families. These families have stepped up to provide a home and a stable force in the lives of children that they then support for a lifetime. With adoptions, DHS caseworkers are contacted by Raise the Future Colorado, formerly known as the Adoption Exchange. So you probably have heard of them. They recently changed their name, about putting their children on something that's called the Heart Gallery. If you've never seen the Heart Gallery, Google it sometime, just look it up. It shows photos of children waiting to be adoptive, all ages of children, and a little of their story. And so it's really touching. And oftentimes, when I look at the Heart Gallery, I'm tempted. I think, oh, I should bring home one of these children. It's a very touching display. And we've had it, I think, here at Centennial Hall. It travels, there's a live display that travels around the state. We've had it in libraries and that sort of thing because we want to get the word out that children need adoptive homes. After the children are on the Heart Gallery, caseworkers then contact all of the families who express interest in adoption, and then that process starts. So with COVID-19, we have seen some impact to adoption sadly. In March through May of last year, there were 30 adoptions. During the same timeframe as the pandemic-related restrictions began in Colorado, there were 13 adoptions. So fewer than half during that same timeframe due to COVID-19. At the beginning of COVID-19, courts were canceling adoptions and rescheduling them. Most courts at the beginning did not allow adoptions via video in March and April. However, the courts, I'm happy to say, have now transitioned adoptions for completion via video for many cases, with some being completed in person. One of the positive impacts of virtual adoptions is that it has allowed family and friends who otherwise would not have been able to attend because of distance to be part of this monumental event in each of these children's lives. And I'll say something that will surprise you. So far in 2020, we have now had 82 adoptions. So since we wrote the proclamation, one more child has been adopted, and we should all be happy and proud about that. Of that group, and this isn't the whole group, but some outstanding statistics that you might want to be aware of. 21 of those children were ages 10 and older. The most difficult children for us to place are older children. And so I think that it's important to remember that adopting older children is also really important in our community. 22 of those were with kinship homes. So a family member adopted the child. And that's really special because, as we all know, nothing can replace family. And so seven of those were in kin-like homes, meaning that they were a friend of the family, maybe a coach or a teacher, someone that knew the child. And in 2019, we had 133 adoptions. 24 of those were children 10 and older. 59 were from kinship homes, and eight were from kin-like homes. So we've expanded our kinship homes, and we've also expanded by three so far this year, children who were age 10 and older. So that's a positive. And then, of course, I can't talk about adoptions without mentioning foster care. There are many more children who need foster homes before they are reunited with their families. And when that isn't possible, then we look for an adoptive home. But we always have a need for foster homes. In a new pilot, El Paso County has certified eight county foster homes and one respite home to provide placement specifically for adolescents. In the past, we always contracted with our child placement agencies, and they're doing a wonderful job, but they struggle to get some of those older, most challenging youth adopted. Some of them might have been in one of our youth corrections facilities, have severe mental health or substance abuse issues. And so Jill Bradley, who's here in the audience today, and we'll talk for just a second. Jill Calvert, this was actually her idea. I owe her a lot of credit for saying, in Mesa County, she was the director in Mesa County, they were interested in doing this or maybe had done it. And so having some of our own foster homes for kids was really important, especially those older youth that are harder to place. And Jill Calvert, Jill Bradley, and Jenny Swager have done an amazing job getting those started in our county. We're not competing with the private agencies, we're just enhancing with some of those older youth. And so one shout-out to the public. If you're interested in becoming a foster family, please contact Jenny Swager, who manages kinship and foster care programs at 719-444-5515. You can also look at our foster page online at elpasoco.com/fostercare to contact a child placement agency directly. And so next on our agenda, I just want to have Jill Bradley will say a few words. We have an adoptive family, Dawn and Jackie here. I actually met Dawn and Jackie several years ago at one of our events, and I have to say, I was so impressed with them. They had a one-year-old and maybe a two- or three-year-old in a bouncy castle, and the kids were just bouncing it and enjoying it and having a great time. But it looked really dangerous, and kids were crashing all over the place, and we were eating pizza. And all through my head, being DHS Director, was somebody's going to get hurt, and maybe we'll get sued. And, you know, this is going to be hard. And what I was really impressed with, with Dawn and Jackie, is they were on it. You know, one of them climbed up in the castle, they were making sure their kids were safe. And I thought, what a fantastic family. So I didn't know that they were going to be here today. And I was so happy to walk in the room, and I'm like, I feel like I know you. And sure enough, a few years ago, I met them. And now they have three adoptive children. So kudos to them. So after Dawn and Jackie, Jill Bradley, our manager over adoptions, will say a few words. And Alyssa Waskewitz, I hope I said that correctly, she's our adoption supervisor, and she'd just like to say a few words and introduce the family. And that's all that I have to say, but thank you for your support, for allowing me to do this job that is hard, but has a bright side too. And the bright side is, we see these wonderful things happen that make such a difference in the life of a child and a family. And so though it's a challenge to be a DHS Director, it's also a joy when you know that your staff and your team is making a real difference in the life of a child. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Good morning. It is always such an honor to be able to come here and address you all and to thank you so much for the support that you provide us. Julie shared everything amazingly, like she does. Just a couple of things I would like to highlight is with Raise the Future, formerly the Adoption Exchange, we also work with Wendy's Wonderful Kids, which is a program under Raise the Future that does child-specific recruitment. And so our youth and children get assigned a recruiter that spends time with them, really gets to know them, gets to see what their likes are, spends time taking them out to lunch, and all the things that our caseworkers love to do and don't always have the time to do. And so with this information, they're able to really help search out homes for these children. So that's another pretty amazing partnership that we have with Raise the Future. In addition to our foster care program, I do want to shout out to Jenny Swager again. She's just doing amazing. And one of our foster parents is an adoptive parent now. She adopted our very first placement. She was our very first licensed foster home, and she adopted a couple months ago, one of our pretty difficult to find a home teenagers. So it was excellent, and they're doing wonderful. And she's called us and said, I'm back and would like to do this again. So again, just thank you so much. It's such an honor to not only be here, but to be over the adoption unit, to have the event we had last weekend, you know, to see everybody out there. We were all bundled up, it was freezing, our signs were getting tore up by the wind, but we wanted to be there to honor those that did come by. So without further ado, I will introduce Alyssa Waskewitz, our adoption supervisor, and she will introduce our family.
So before we do that, can you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I apologize. Yes, my name is Jill Bradley, and I am one of the ongoing managers at the El Paso County Department of Human Services.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning. My name's Alyssa Waskewitz. I am the supervisor over the adoption unit at the Department of Human Services. I am here today to introduce our adoptive family. They're absolutely amazing. They're going to be coming up here and talking about their journey. We have had the pleasure of working with them three times now over the past couple of years, and their names are Dawn and Jackie. So if you could come up here, please? Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you, Alyssa, DHS, County Commissioners, for giving us this opportunity to be able to share our journey. When and how to start a family can be emotional and stressful, but when the time's right, you and your spouse will know. We were ready to start our family, and it was time to decide how, in vitro or adoption. For us, adoption was the best course. So from then, where would we adopt? The U.S., another country, or foster care? There was no question that foster care was our number-one choice. Why? Well, I grew up with foster kids coming in and out of my home for 33 years. My parents had many kids of all ages who needed a home, a place where they would be safe, cared for, loved unconditionally, and supported in their dreams and goals. And I would always say, I'm never going to do this, because it was too emotional, and it was too hard to get attached to the kids that came in and out of our homes. In the final year of my mom's foster home, she was blessed with a sibling group of three, two boys and a girl. These three kiddos melted our hearts, and we were in love with them. We could see ourselves raising these three kids, going on trips, learning together, baking, enjoying holidays, and with families and friends. So we started looking into the process of what we needed to get these three kids into our home. The process was longer than we thought it would be, mainly because of circumstances that were out of our control. But when the process was finally completed, the sibling group had been adopted by relatives through kinship adoption. We were sad, yet extremely happy. We are a family of faith and knew that there was a different plan for us. However, we had no idea that the plan included three brand-new babies over the course of two years. The first being delivered to us one month after our foster adopt home was opened, the second to follow seven months later, and the third 14 months after that. So DHS really trusted us with our home, and it started with DHS because of the faith that they had with us.
Our foster-to-adopt journey started on April 13th at 5:00, when a seven-and-a-half-month-old baby girl on oxygen was brought to our brand-new home. We had just moved in four weeks before. The DHS staff member who delivered her brought a small bag of the baby's belongings, and all we had was a pack-and-play. Within a couple hours, our house looked like Babies R Us had thrown up in it. We had baby toys, a bouncer, a car seat system, blankets, bathtubs, strollers, and so much more, all from our family and friends. Within 48 hours, our foster care agency, Kids Crossing, not only had paperwork for us and resources that we could access, like the Resource Exchange and the WIC office, but they also brought a welcome baby bag with clothes, diapers, and toys. The first week of having her was crazy, setting up appointments with the DHS caseworker, Kids Crossing Home Coordinator, the Guardian at Lydum, Resource Exchange, WIC, and a pediatrician. Little did we know that the week to follow would be just as crazy, if not busier. Our home became a glass house with a revolving door. Every month, the DHS caseworker, Kids Crossing Home Coordinator, would come into our home and check in on how the child was doing. They'd also check on us as well. Not only did we have those meetings, but we also had meetings with the Guardian, Ed Lydum, once every three months, and the physical therapist from the Resource Exchange once a week for about an hour. For our second and third placements, they had visitations with bioparents once a week as well. So we were very busy. The process is stressful and emotional. It is so important to have plans for self-care. For example, I read, crochet, play games on my phone, and stay up after everyone's gone to bed just to have some alone time and watch whatever I want to watch. Jackie, she likes to watch sports, listen to books on tape, and does a variety of puzzle books. For you, it might be going for a run, walk, hike, walk the dogs, or some other physical activity. Aside from self-care, you and your spouse need to maintain your connection as well and make it even stronger. Like I said before, this process is stressful and emotional. You will need your alone time together, and not just in the bathroom. That's the one place in the home where we can go and not be disrupted like, Mama, I need, or Mommy, can I have, for the most part anyway, until they learn to open the door. To be honest, in the beginning, we were not the best at date nights, but we have gotten better as time has gone by. We plan one night a month to either go to the movies, dinner, or just do something special, even if it's for an hour. This is so important in maintaining your sanity and peace and in keeping your connection strong.
Needless to say, we were not prepared for the roller coaster ride. Our stress level and emotions were up and down. Our ride even went upside-down at one point. However, we were very thankful for our team. Our team included DHS, Kids Crossing, the Resource Exchange, anyone in El Paso County that we could utilize resources from, we use them. We knew of the process, but we didn't really know the process. So we decided to attend all court sessions. Got to be first-name basis with some of the judges, let me say. These sessions were very informative and educational, and we received recertification credit hours for our foster care licensure. At times, the court proceedings would be straightforward and predictable, and other times, we were confused at what was being stated and what it all meant. We asked question after question about what everything meant and why things were the way they were. We're pretty sure that some of the team was like, they're calling again, but we would have never known it. Everyone we always asked was very patient, kind, and compassionate with us. And we keep saying that the process is stressful and emotional, but it's all worth it. And the stress and emotions go from what's going to happen to, oh my goodness, our case has finally moved to the adoption unit. Our first case is one of the easiest cases anyone on our team had ever seen, and we were able to finalize her adoption when she was 17 months old, only 15 months after she was placed with us. Our second and third cases were a bit more complex. Adoptions were finalized 26 months after placement and 31 months after placement, respectively. But no matter how short or how long the case was, our team would take time to explain everything, and never did they give us false hope. They were very transparent and thorough. They were also very straightforward about how the process worked, what was to come next, and the possible outcomes. The team provided supports we didn't even know we needed or wanted. So take advantage of any and all supports you are offered, especially if they are for the benefit of the child placed in your home.
To wrap up, here are some things to keep in mind as you make your way through your adoption journey. It is okay to ask for help. You are not alone. Your team is there to help you. The process is not to be taken lightly. It will be emotional and physically draining. Take care of yourself and of each other. Remind yourself every day of the following: We are given our children, biological, foster, or adopted, for as long as we are supposed to have them. Love and care for them as if it is your last day with them. Be strong and hang in there. The best things in life are worth waiting for. We want to thank our Kids Crossing and DHS family for all the love and support they have given us over the past four-and-a-half years, and as well as their hard work and patience. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this proclamation? All right, seeing none, I will bring it up here for some deliberation and a vote. Who'd like to kick us off? Commissioner Williams.
I would just like to say, my husband is adopted, and about three years ago, met both of his parents and his adoptive parents. And she was 15 years old and was very wise enough to give up her baby to a family that needed it. And we thank her every day for that, almost overnight. It turns out that she's from Las Vegas, which is quote-unquote "the Midwest." We always thought maybe she was from Ohio. And my husband's mother had eventually ended up in Las Vegas, too. So trips to Las Vegas are quite the family adventure. It usually takes a whole week to visit every single member of the family, from top to bottom, nieces, nephews, cousins, people we didn't even know two years ago, people I can't even remember their names. But she's just simply an angel, and I'm thankful for the choice that she made all of those years ago to know, have the wisdom that she did not have the means to raise this child and to put him up for adoption into a loving family who did. So adoption is near and dear to my heart. I have five nieces and nephews who are adopted as well, and kids who want to adopt at some point. So it's always a nice resolution to celebrate every year.
Thank you. Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great testimony this morning. I'd like to thank our family that's here because they shared their story, and there's always emotion involved in sharing that story. And sometimes it takes a little bit of bravery to come out and say that. You know, I believe deeply in the power of families. They are the device that helps us address so many social issues in our nation. Families need to be supported. And families are critical to so many things and so many challenges that we have, but one of those most definitely includes making sure that children are nurtured and loved so that they can have a normal life, so that they can be productive members of society later. It is so important to have a stable and loving family connected to them so that they can grow up and do the things they need to do going forward in their lives. And we should always be supporting families and relying on our families and contributing to our families. I certainly see elements of that in the work that goes on in the Department of Human Services and all of the supportive services that we have in our community. It is a great team that we've got that's doing that. And you know, even in my family, in my extended family, we also have adopted children. So, you know, not myself personally, but others in the family have also contributed to helping kids grow up in a normal life so that they can go on in their lives, having learned from their parents, even if they were not maybe their birth parents, about what's right and wrong in how we live here. So I'd like to thank our adoption families. I'd like to thank I'd like to thank our Department of Human Services, and again, all of those supportive services that we have in the community here. Many of them are nonprofits that are dedicated to this cause. And then in particular, I'd like to thank the families that do adoptions. You're really contributing in a great way to ensuring that our community is stable and safe and secure and healthy. And with all of that, I am so proud to be the co-sponsor for this proclamation. This is one of the most important things we do in our community, to take care of our kids and keep supporting our families. Those are super important and I'm glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Vice Chair, anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to thank Julie and the staff and the team, all the great work you continue to do. This is one of those proclamations that we all take pride in supporting each year. I was very happy to be able to get out there this Saturday to participate in the honking wave for all the families. And a little chilly, but it was a nice and beautiful little ceremony supporting them. And of course, I want to thank all the residents and families that participate in the program for adoptions and fostering. It's, you know, it's one of the most important gifts you can give, the gift of a family. Thank you.
A job more important than raising kids. You know, in our lives, we won't do anything that's more worthwhile than that. And it doesn't matter, you know, whether you have that biological connection or not. You know, raising kids is still incredibly important. It's what we do for the future. We have to put them in a good way to be able to take over when our time is done. And I always think about this adoption resolution as we do it here. And it's, I always kind of watch the adoptive parents and think, and the foster parents and think, yeah, is this something I could do? Is it, could I engage in this activity? Could I, would I be willing to do that? And to be quite honest with you, sometimes I think, no, I'm not sure that I could. And here's why. You know, it's a lifetime commitment. When you, when you take that child in, you're doing it for life. And that's pretty much, I think, the same whether they're a foster kid. I think many of those foster families take that connection on for life. But certainly with adoptive parents, so I, you know, God bless you and thank you for doing that. Because again, there's, you're going to have no more important job in our society than raising the next generation and raising our kids and making sure that they're ready to take over when we're no longer there. So thank you for doing it. And thanks to Julie and her crew for all they do to facilitate that process and to make it a good one. One last thing, Julie just texted me and said, hey, can we do a picture after this is over? And I said, no. And I'm sorry that we're not going to be able to do that today, but, you know, with all of these COVID restrictions that are in place and with the governor further rolling us back, I just think that that's probably not the best idea. So I promise you this, I won't be here next year, but you all come in and they'll do a picture and it'll be, it'll be a much better picture, because we'll have, which now Commissioner-Elect Geithner here, will be Commissioner Geithner next year, and she'll take my place. And it'll be a much more pleasant picture with her in it instead of me. Commissioner Bremer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And hold on, because I gave you fair warning, I had plenty to say. And now after hearing the personal story, I have even more to say. So, you know, I think Julie mentioned that pictures speak volumes, but one of the, one of the signs that one of the employees was holding up said, "Adoption is not the call to have the perfect family, it's the call to give," or "The perfect Rosie family is the call to give love, mercy, and patience." And to me, that is the perfect family. And that sign did speak volumes with its words. And, you know, actions speak louder than words as well. And you and all of our adoptive families and foster families are, not only are you demonstrating to the rest of us how we can impact our world and impact the world of a child, but you're also teaching those children, just by doing, that they can do hard things, they can do difficult things, because you're going through it for them. And you're demonstrating it every day. And I just, I wanted to thank you for that. I wanted to thank you for your vulnerability. You're also teaching them vulnerability and how to share their stories and the part of who they are, and teaching them how to use that constructively and be who they were made to be. And I'm just, in my little mind, I'm thinking, this full-circle thing is just so beautiful. And you're an integral part of that. And every, every, all of us have the opportunity to do that in some way. And sometimes it is through fostering or adopting, sometimes it is through doing what we can, through policy, or through mentorship, or charitable donations, or volunteering. There are a lot of ways that everybody has a call to impact in some way. And so I just wanted to use that as a little bit of encouragement and the way in which you're giving back is so inspiring. So thank you again. You know, my colleagues laugh at me and kind of roll their eyes a little bit when I make them sign two copies of this, because I hang it up on the wall in my office each year. And it reminds me on those days where I'm not sure if we're having an impact, if we're being effective, or when this job seems incredibly challenging with either DHS issues, or health issues, or COVID-19 issues, this reminds me that we're here to do great work. And in the midst of all of this, this is still here and we still have to continue that. And now I'll look at this year's proclamation on my wall and remember your family, your stories. And so just know that even though, I don't know if your foster-adoption journey is done or if there are more to come for your family. All right. But just know that your work isn't done in your home and I will look at this every day and know that our work isn't done here either. And so thank you for that. All of the prepared comments I have, I'm just going to throw out the door, because this was the most effective thing we could do to bring awareness, was your sharing your story. And I don't need to say much else. Actually, I do, sorry. I also wanted to mention and give huge kudos to our partnership with Pikes Peak Library District and a locally homegrown author, Lindsay Lackey, who recently partnered with our Department of Human Services and the library district to provide middle school of foster kids with her book, All the Impossible Things. And just the title is also giving me chills. And I can't wait to put that middle school reading book on my next reading list. But I'm so, I'm so impressed with this community that this continues to be a topic of dialogue that rises to, rises to the topic of conversations and partnerships beyond really the typical adoption world. This one went to the library district and to an author and can still have some impact. So I'm incredibly grateful for that, also as a Pikes Peak Library District board liaison with Commissioner Williams. That's an impressive thing. That's the kind of, that is the way our local community can really get involved. Thank you for being here.
All right. If there's nothing else, we will call the vote. Commissioner Bremer.
Aye.
Commissioner VanderWorf.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes unanimously. Congratulations and thank you again.